Commissioner Coleman for our invocation.
Good morning. This morning, I have a dear friend of mine who I've known for basically my whole life, and Arlen Palmer is a great guy, love attending church with him, and as I've grown older, got to know that he's not only a great guy to go to church with, but he also is having a great impact in our community. So Reverend Arlen Palmer works as chaplain and diversity coordinator for Wedgewood, which does great work in our community with youth, and also as the chaplain for Neighborhood Association for Eastern Avenue CRC. And I've heard that over the 35 or so years, 37 years that he's been working at Wedgewood, he's also had nearly 40 foster kids through his home.
Teenage boys, yeah.
So just a really, one of the community leaders that I'm just privileged and honored to have here this morning to give an invocation as we start our meeting.
Thank you. Grace and peace to you all, and I see some friendly faces of those that I know. Let us go now to the throne of grace. Lord, I thank you this morning. We adore you. You woke us up this morning. You have blessed us. You are the God of creation. You are the God who has created us and created all this diversity that sits around within this room. And so, Lord, I stand amazed, and I stand amazed with these wonderful folks that you've created in your image, and you have called to this particular place, to this particular time, to lead and guide our city in directions. So I'm thankful for each and every commissioner that you have ordained. Lord, the scripture says that you have put rulers in places, although we elect them, they have been anointed by you. So, Lord, you've asked us to pray for them, encourage them. They asked you to guide them as they give us direction, and they work with ethics, and they take care of us as a huge community. Lord, I'm just so blessed and reminded that I just need to continue to pray in awe for our leaders. And, Lord, represented in this room and in their chairs, in front of me and the chairs behind me, our families with stories, things that are going on even within their lives, but yet, Lord, we want to serve you and then want to lead you as we govern ourselves, as you have blessed us. So, Lord, we ask you to bless this meeting. May it be run in decency and in order. May we honor you, and may we continue to impact and do our best for you for this county. We thank you in Jesus' name and all God's people said.
Amen.
Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for that. Our next item on the agenda is a special order of business, and we have from The Right Place today, President and CEO Randy Thalen and also Tim Rozz. Thanks for joining us this morning.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Is the microphone on?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Well, good morning, everybody. Again, my name is Randy Thalen. I'm the president and CEO of The Right Place. I've been in this position now for two years. I was here about a year ago, providing an update, and I've had a chance to meet and interact with many of you on and off throughout the year as we pursue different economic growth projects. Today, I want to spend hopefully five minutes going through these slides. You have them in your packet, but really make sure we have time for your questions. We do a lot, obviously, in economic development. Tim leads our community development work and is a great interface for the county, but certainly want to be able to answer any questions you have here today. We restructured, we mentioned this last year, our vision is still to grow the regional economy, helping to grow those opportunities. The Reverend talked about every family has a story. I think in economic development, every number that we share today represents a family that has a story. And I think finding ways to get good-paying jobs to people in our community is the best way to lift up their quality of life and lift up their families, and we're really proud of the work we're able to do. We do it around people, place, and prosperity, so really focused on talent and diversity. We've got a superstar leading that effort, Treta Johnson. Hopefully, you've had a chance to meet or see her around town, really helping companies explore how do they better improve their talent pipelines and help provide more jobs for more people across the region. As I said, Tim leads our placemaking effort, which is new for us, really helping guide communities and some community development projects that make our region, our communities magnetic for talent and for people. And finally, prosperity, which is what we're probably known most for, and that's the job and investment kind of activity, that's sort of the frosting in the sprinkles, if you will, for our work. Our primary goals you see here, we just wrapped up our three-year strategic plan at the end of last year. We set aggressive goals. You see those at the top, 3,400 jobs, new payroll, new capital investment of $500 million. We were able to exceed all of those in the face of a pandemic, in the face of a sort of rollercoaster economy, we were able to exceed all of our goals. Some major projects around the county, you see Gentex is one of the more recent ones. They chose a location in 49507. We were able to help them secure a space, sort of to get a toehold in the market. Interestingly enough, they thought they would have about 50 people as a target there already. They've had 80 people within their company that are living in and around 49507, driving to Zeland each day. They've asked if they could stay and work closer to home. So the quality of life for them, not only from a job with Gentex, of course, but also now they've cut down their commute and their time with their family just went up substantially. Snack Craft on the right is another fun one, a Greece-based company that makes healthy snacks and serves, you know, all kinds of major retailers, including Spartan and Meyer and Gordon's right here. One year from the day they decided they wanted to go, they were able to open up, and, you know, it may not seem that fast, but in the world of development of that scale, that's remarkably fast, and we're really proud that the community was able to help facilitate that and make sure they could accomplish their business goals in that period of time. Handful of others. Holofootwear was Portland-based apparel company, minority-owned company, moved their headquarters here to downtown. King Milling in Lowell able to work with their community to continue to advance their work and their growth in downtown Lowell. Last year, we visited with nearly 300 Kent County companies with their top leadership, trying to identify opportunities for growth. We assisted, provided what we call a business assist. That means referring them on to other services. It could be connecting them up with a community college. It could be connecting them up with the Hispanic Center. It could be connecting them up with West Michigan Works on talent issues. So 400 of those 300, 450 times, we made those connections. So sometimes it's two and three kind of opportunities per visit. And Tim's team visited 64 community development visits. That's working with our local communities on their plans and their vision for their communities. It's also working with developers throughout West Michigan. And now, Tim just came back from southeast Michigan, trying to encourage other developers to consider opportunities throughout our county and throughout our region. One of the things that Tim led last year was a regional grant to the state of Michigan. We're the only truly regional grant that was approved by the state. We gathered communities from across the region and across Kent County. We put these place-based, placemaking kind of grants together, and in Kent County, over half of the grant award that we were able to receive went here to Kent County, and you see the five projects represented there. We also launched it last fall, a technology strategy. When we think about our economy, we have, we think our three core industry pillars. We have advanced manufacturing, which has been our roots for many, many, many years, and continue to build and focus there. We've added health sciences right here on the Medical Mile, and now we want to add tech and technology more broadly, technology helping not only create a sector in and of itself, but also help our existing companies be more tech savvy, more responsive, adaptive to technology, making them more resilient, making them more competitive. We've had some major wins out of the gate. We launched a big program called Tech Week GR last year. We had 4,000 people participate. We're pushing, my team says 8,000, I say 10,000 this fall. We'll see if we're going to settle on 10,000 as our goal, but really want to stake our claim as a tech economy. We've seen companies begin to put their names, some growing companies put their names up on buildings, Campspot, Iris, Configura, are three of the faster-growing companies that just right here have begun to put their names on buildings, kind of stake their claim as a company. So it's fun to see that momentum. The other piece I'll share from a strategy standpoint is site development. And last year at this time, the question was raised, what else can, you know, we do together? What can the county be thinking about? I mentioned site development at that point. We're running out of business development parks. We're running out of places for business to naturally grow, and the infrastructure to serve those sites is very challenging, very costly, and developers can't pull that infrastructure to that site and still make it economically viable for them. So looking at some grant money that we've been able to procure through the state, where we've identified some sites around the region that we all probably drive by and say, boy, a business park would go well there, or some business opportunity would go well there, but it hasn't happened. If you see that, generally, the case is the infrastructure's not there. We've got some grant dollars. We believe we can make an impact on it this year. When we visit those 300 companies across Kent County, here's some of the behind-the-scenes data. Three, seven out of 10 are reporting increasing sales. Over half are planning expansions. That means hiring people or adding equipment or adding to their building. So a lot of optimism there. And as I said, over almost 60% are adding people specifically. So there is, despite the, you know, the commentary about pending recession, despite coming out of a pandemic, the companies here continue to be very optimistic and see opportunity. We rewrote our next three, or we wrote our next three-year strategic plan. You can see the four sort of elements to that plan. It's still around people, place, and prosperity. That drives our work. And then layered into that, we're looking at what specifically can we do within those pillars to drive economic growth? How can we be mindful to be creating more inclusive opportunities? How do we elevate the brand of Greater Grand Rapids? We can't be the best secret, best kept secret any longer if we're going to compete for talent and compete for business. So we got to elevate that brand. And then boost the regional impact. How do we make sure the entirety of our region is benefiting? If you look at the economic forecast, certainly Kent County has a lot of growth potential going forward. It doesn't really connect with some of the surrounding counties, and so we're doing some work with them to help lift up the entirety of the region. So our goals are there. They're in your packet, but we've increased our goals. Even though there's forecasts for a bit of a slowdown at the end of this year, we think we can do more, and so the goals have been increased. And with that, I'll take a breath and take any questions that you might have.
Oh, thank you. All right. I'm sure there's a few questions. So the first one I see is the commissioner down there.
Baker.
Commissioner Baker. I know who you are. So go ahead, Commissioner Baker.
Just, I have a couple of quick questions. One is, and these are both big questions, so you'll have to remember. So do we have the systems in place to support training and recruiting talent? And then secondly, what are you hearing in terms of pressures in the housing market for those people that are coming into the city?
Yeah, so two questions around, one around talent, then related to that is housing. We do have the infrastructure to train people properly. You look at the capacity that we have, you know, formally through the community college. Frankly, their enrollments are down right now. You know, typically, when you have a soft economy, you'll see enrollments at community colleges go up. In the downturn, in the pandemic, sort of not even downturn, in a drop-off in the pandemic, we did not see enrollments go up at community colleges, and it's sort of struggling to come back. When labor is tight, people generally don't go to training. They take a job and they make a wage. But we have that capacity in a robust way. Now, sometimes we might need to tweak it and add more technology to it. We might need to add more equipment to make sure it stays current, but we have that capacity. I'm confident. We also have great partners, the Hispanic Center. The Urban League has really stepped up its training program of late under Eric Brown's leadership. WIMCAT has launched new technology. West Michigan Center for Art and Technology is increasing their IT's, Jaman, they've increased their T, their technology aspect of what they're doing. So I don't see gaps there. Where I do see opportunity, though, is more companies reaching deeper into the talent pipeline downstream to pull them through and help young people understand what the opportunities are and the pathways forward. We have, I'm working with the ISD. I don't know if this is breaking news. I think Ron will be okay, but I've agreed to chair an effort around career and technical education, and how do we grow that effort here. One of the big ways that I see is more companies working with more high school students to make them aware of opportunities. Right now, 50, it's either 56 or 54% of our students in Kent County public schools go to college. The other four, college or service, there's armed services, 44% don't know what to do next. Those are the students we can't have wander, trying to find their career, and I think employers have a big role to play in connecting with them, showing a pathway, helping fund their training, help their development, and help them have a great launch to a career. The housing side is one that Tim and our team is working a little bit on the edges. We work with developers to try to accelerate the development growth in some of the multi-mixed-use, multifamily kind of projects is probably our niche where we focus the most, and we're trying to invite local developers, we're trying to invite other developers to help meet the man that was, the demand that was outlined in the study. I don't, though, believe that we should pull off the accelerator on job creation until housing catches up. I think what I experienced in Colorado is you have to have this flywheel effect where talent attracts jobs, attracts housing, attracts talent, attracts jobs, attracts housing, and we're not quite in that rhythm. We're close, and in Michigan, we're by far the closest to have that kind of dynamic. So we got to find a way to keep that rhythm going.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Randy.
Morning.
I had a question for you. This kind of is on the edge of maybe what you guys normally do, and I've already talked to Tim at great length about this, but, and I need to preface this by saying I'm an event promoter. That's kind of what I do in my other life. We have a really glaring lack of event space here in Grand Rapids, and I know this isn't exactly what you guys are about. However, you are about bringing people in, and there's a lot of promoters out there right now that simply are being turned away because there's no room at the end. You know, the DeVos place is booked pretty much year after year with good dates. And I was just wondering if you guys have taken that under consideration, and if there's anything you can do. There are some pretty good locations for potential event sites. We lost the Delta Plex, which picked up a lot of the stuff that couldn't get booked downtown. So I was just curious if that's, if there's anything or any resources that you know of to help maybe get another event space, which again, brings people in.
Right.
They suck up a whole bunch of hotel rooms, which helps us with the excise taxes and so forth, and brings a lot of commerce in. It may be more temporary, but it's also exposing a lot of people, including vendors and attendees that come to. And I'm talking about consumer shows and industry shows, so.
No, great question. I have seen that since coming back two years ago. There is, even some of the stuff we try to organize at The Right Place, it's always can we find a venue, which is really odd for a market of our size. You wouldn't think that would be the constraint. We're not actively engaged in that space. I leaned to Doug and the team at Experience GR for that, but I would tell you, I agree wholeheartedly, though, a pathway to attract more talent, and frankly, even retain talent, is to have great events, have great programs, great activities that really showcase our community, that causes people to want to come back and stay, or if you live here and you get just a little bit more elevated quality of life.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Randy.
Morning.
I wanted to speak or ask you about your experiences with the businesses that you mentioned and that flywheel effect that you mentioned. I was speaking with some representatives from the Ready by Five organization yesterday, and we talked a lot about the need for childcare across the state and some of the initiatives that the governor is working on, which are great, but we're seeing that we're already running into some problems. Not enough staffing for those childcare centers, childcare centers that are ready to open. The building is there, but they can't find the staff. And so I'm curious if you've had conversations with local businesses in the area around childcare. We see initiatives from other, or from businesses, either, you know, maybe in this state or in other states who are talking about, you know, creating childcare centers or partnering with childcare centers for their employees. So have you, have you and the local businesses spoken about that at all?
Have. I'll admit, I haven't personally. Treta Johnson and Victor Joaquin on our team, who lead our people effort, have helped bring a coalition together. There was a grant that came through that really leaned on The Right Place and to kind of convene that group of childcare providers and work with employers to find solutions to that problem. It is maybe much like housing. It's maybe the 1A and 1B in terms of the more difficult challenges to solve right now. From a labor standpoint, it's really difficult. From an employer standpoint, it's tough. I can speak to my experience in Denver, where we looked to try to bring some childcare centers into the downtown, and the difficulty you'll find with employers is people prefer overwhelmingly, they prefer to drop their son or daughter off near their home, drive to work, come back, so their kid is not in their car, they're not on the commute. And so that's something that is just a real dynamic in that marketplace. But we have convened, Victor actually pulled a group together yesterday, childcare providers, employers, to talk about what are some creative solutions. Some companies have put it on-site, so the major, you know, the massive, large companies have the scale where you can have a childcare center on-site. Most are going to have to be a collaborative, where you put it in a business park, and six, eight companies kind of work together. I would also argue, though, the key is it can't just be captive to those six or eight companies. It has to be broader availability. They have preference, their employees have preference, but it's got to be broader.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Clough.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Randy, for that presentation. That was really great to get an understanding of kind of how things are improving, I guess, continuous, continuing to improve in Kent County. Just had a quick question, I guess. You had mentioned on one of your slides that the industrial space, or, you know, that you're trying, your organization is trying to find ways to better utilize those spaces, but, I mean, there's also other smaller spaces that continue to be underutilized. I'm thinking about, you know, all of the strip malls, right, that many of them are barely 50% at capacity. Are there, are you guys working at all with those, with those owners to try and figure out ways to better utilize those spaces? Because, I mean, it's just, it seems like a lost opportunity to, you know, have, to either reconfigure those spaces, or, you know, use those for other businesses that could better benefit the community. And then a second question is just in regards to, you talked about housing. Obviously, if we're trying to recruit people to work for these businesses that need employees, housing is important, but also thinking about the fact that, you know, Michigan has no sort of rental price control. And are you guys working at all with the legislature to try and make some changes to make housing a bit more affordable so that we can have people that are working for the companies that we are trying to get employees be able to afford to live in the spaces where they work?
Yeah, two great questions there. On the housing piece, I would say we're support but not lead, and so it's not been core. Our core sort of lot in life is to how do we help grow and improve job opportunities and income opportunities for our community? So that's where we stay laser-focused. But we know housing is a constraint, and so we're supportive of other initiatives. There's a move to consider tax increment financing tweaks that would help make housing a little bit more, housing development a little bit more attainable or achievable. But we haven't, it's just, to be honest, housing is something where we kind of said, look, there are other partners, housing next, and others who are lead, and we'll support that effort. Frankly, we've looked at, on your other question on how do we reposition retail spaces, we've looked at some of the bigger box areas on some older commercial corridors and see opportunity for a reimagination of those spaces. I hadn't really thought of those smaller retail, strip malls, strip centers, if you will, that are struggling maybe even more. And if you think about the way some industrial applications are becoming almost made-to-order and 3D printing and small machine, I mean, that's interesting. Let us explore that, because I think there might be some micro-industrial kind of things that could go in those spaces that would not be terribly disruptive to the neighborhood from a truck standpoint, but also create some jobs and maybe some energy. Some of those spaces you can even walk in and buy from. So let, I'll commit to thinking on that more and ask him to think on it more and come up with some ideas. But that's interesting. Thank you.
Put in.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for joining us today, Mr. Thalen. And I think for the first, since the housing basis have been successfully covered, I think this is the first time you've come before this body that I'm not asking you about housing. Instead, I wanted to first, at least in light of the comments you made about career tech education and working with KSD, I would just urge you to enlist the support of those businesses and entities that utilize registered apprenticeship programs, programs registered with the Department of Labor. I mean, in the end, especially those that are trying to cross the wage cliff, those who would love to pursue a higher wage position but are worried that whatever support systems they have now would fall out from under them while they're pursuing that higher wage. A, you know, an apprenticeship program that comes with benefits and decent wages while you're learning to get a certification is a great way to traverse that. My question, I had one question in terms of the community development side, and then the other was, when it comes to the businesses that you've tried to incur and attract and support, how many of them are publicly traded and how many of them aren't, do you know? And if you got to give a ballpark, that's fine. We'll quote you on it.
Yeah. So let me tackle your first comment first, as my brain tries to think through the public versus private. On the, on the technical training side, it is absolutely critical. If you, if you pull back on the demographic changes that are taking place across the region, we're absolutely becoming more diverse. I think we all are aware and understand that. The labor supply, the working age population is generally stagnant and to a degree shrinking a little bit. As the baby boomers retire en masse, the waves behind millennials was a massive, you know, flow of, but behind the Gen X and Gen Z on either side of millennials, much smaller. And so the labor pool, even in a growing market like ours, is not going to grow like it has in the past. So labor demand continues, we hope, labor supply kind of restricted. You're going to see wages naturally go up, but it's really only going to go up for people who can show they can provide a higher value of sort of contribution, if you will, through their work. That requires training and greater skill set, employers who commit, as we talked earlier, to identify people that, everybody has gifts, everybody has talents. The company who can pull those gifts and talents out of people and put them in their best position, those people are going to excel, those companies are going to excel, and that's kind of the core of our talent work. I'd have to really go back and look at the numbers as to how many are publicly traded versus privately. If I went back and just looked at the projects last year that we showed earlier, Gentex is publicly traded. That might be the only one. Yeah, I mean, by and large, the companies that are in, that are locating or finding new opportunities for growth are generally private companies. Publicly traded companies more often than not move or grow by acquisition.
Yeah.
It's not always the case, but generally.
That was why I was curious.
Yeah.
You know, just in terms of often in the business you're in of attraction and incentivizing and helping bring in businesses, those that are publicly traded are always the least sticky, so to speak, right? The, and sometimes the more difficult to retain. And so I was curious.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, to a degree, that's a little bit more random. I wouldn't say it's quite. I mean, you have decision-making that's more local. If you, if you have an entrepreneur that's starting up a business, that is the stickiest company, of course, and we're working with a lot of those types of firms. Remember, the lion's share of our work is on business retention, the 300 companies across Kent County that we visit with, and we target those companies that sell their good or service outside of the region and bring new money in.
Yeah.
So we are looking to support those types of companies, no question.
And then my last question, which might be a better answer, might be better answered by Mr. Rozz, is if I remembered seeing in the recently passed supplemental, there was another influx of cash for a similar placemaking initiative. I don't know if it's identical to what happened last year, but do you know how that, how those dollars will be dispensed? Will it flow through The Right Place? Will it flow through MEDC? What do we know about it?
Yeah, so the MEDC was, so it was, Tim, what was it called? The redevelopment?
Revitalization.
Revitalization and placemaking, the RAP program last year. They've refunded that program with another $100 million this year through the MEDC. Communities can apply, regions can apply, and we'll be, we'll be gathering another round of communities to consider jointly applying so we can increase their probability of success.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner LaGrand.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to touch on the welcome plan and wondering if in your, you know, discussions with new businesses, with businesses that you're working on retention strategies, what are you hearing? Are you seeing any effects of that? It's something that I'm a really big fan of, and I'm just curious what you've seen.
Did you say, I'm sorry, the welcome?
The welcome plan, yes.
With refugee and immigrant?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So we have cer, we have certainly a number of employers that are actively engaged with that, and that would be, you know, as I mentioned before, the different assist, business assists and connections that we're making. We are working with companies to look at newcomers to West Michigan and how do they engage and how do they work? Some, frankly, some companies are better equipped to do that than others. My wife and I and our in-laws support a refugee family have for years, and the challenges they face are substantial with employers, without, I mean, it's just, it's substantial. So we look for companies that we think have the capacity internal to provide some services beyond just the job, to be more effective there. I would say, though, one thing that we're doing, not as, not as, a little bit more delicate than the welcome effort, is if you saw the New York Times article recently about the child labor challenges that we've seen in companies here and frankly, across the country, as we've seen a wave of population migration, some young people have made their way through the cracks and found their way into employment where maybe they shouldn't have been. And so we have a manufacturing council that's been in place for about 35 years, some stellar companies with stellar track records, and they're putting together, you know, with our support, of course, sort of a roadmap for how companies can make sure that doesn't happen, and what things do they need to put in place to prevent that situation from happening. And then on the positive side, what things can be done proactively to, you know, for those young people that want to start exploring their career? How do you do it right? And so we're probably about, I just saw the draft the other day. We're probably a week or so away from issuing that, but that's how we're engaging in those things.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation this morning, and it's, I'm just curious, I, my day job's in the tech industry, so is the, is the strategy to try to attract tech companies, or are we just trying to attract tech workers who go anywhere and everywhere these days?
Yeah, it's sort of a yes to both. So we have three elements to our tech strategy. One is around talent. We know, right now, we're at 6.5% of our economy or of our workforce is in a tech position. We want to grow that to 10%. That's more in line with the aspirational, higher-performing markets across the country, the Salt Lake Cities, the Denvers, the Nashvilles, the Rollies. And so to get to 10% in the next 10 years, we have to add 20,000 tech workers to the economy. We have roughly 35,000 today. To get there, we have to produce more talent. Flat-out, we have to produce more talent. So we're working with our educational institutions to do that. Grand Valley State is piloting a new program right now where they are working with young people who are maybe in their third or fourth year in a degree per with young people who are maybe in their third or fourth year in a degree pursuit that is of interest to them, but maybe not of interest to the job market. Dr. Mantella, the president there, came up with a creative idea where, and employers that we help bring into the table are piloting this, where the company provides a co-op, a bit of a scholarship opportunity for that individual. So if you're studying, let's say sociology, we don't have high demand for sociology graduates in West Michigan, and so if you're studying that, you're a well-rounded person. That hit close to home? Sorry, sorry, sorry. There's, it's in, it's, it's impossible to pick a degree that doesn't offend somebody. I'm sorry. Let's say you're an economist. I'm an economist. So if you're an econ major and there's no clear path to a career, you can take this tech capstone year, get a co-op with a company for 20 hours a week, go through some training in data analytics or cybersecurity or intro to software programming, and finish your year with a certificate in tech on top of your degree with a co-op relationship with an employer that's likely going to lead to sustained employment. And this is a way for us to accelerate that tech talent pipeline. Rather than waiting for that freshman class to matriculate all the way through, you can start with juniors and seniors and really accelerate it. And this is an example that I mentioned earlier, where employers are reaching deeper in, putting resources in a targeted way and helping young people find that pathway forward. I did this in other markets successfully with companies. We can do it here, certainly. So, but it's, to your question, though, we're not, it's not just about attracting Google to open up an office here. That's what everybody thinks about when they think of economic development. It's how do we develop, but instead, it's more, how do we develop a pool of talent that's attractive for existing companies to employ, maybe as attractive for other companies to come here and enjoy, or for them, frankly, in this moment, to hire them remotely? And we have to have communities that are so attractive and magnetic here that those folks stay here but work somewhere else. It's an interesting time in that regard.
All right. Any other questions or comments? None? Seeing none? Okay. Well, hey, I really appreciate the level of involvement the Right Place has with the partnership that we have in the Sustainable Business Park and all the work that, you know, Tim's been part of. He's been a great member of the team. And, you know, thanks for all the work that you do in elevating our region to attract talent and economic opportunities.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this morning, and thanks for the partnership. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks. All right. Our next item on the agenda is public comment. For those who are interested in speaking, you have three minutes. Please state your name and the agenda item that you're speaking to this morning.
How you doing, everybody? My name is DeAndre Jones, State 967 Tamarack Avenue, Grand Rapids, Michigan Northwest.
What is the agenda item you hope?
I'm speaking on the Right Place Inc. presentation. So as you guys all know, I love to speak about economic development, and it's cool to see the presentation of the Economic Development Organization that brings all of the talent into big companies and helps develop our talent. I heard him speaking about 3D printing, and as you've heard me say, I wanted to 3D print some homes, but I actually found out that we're at state code 15 and we have to be at state code 21 to actually properly 3D print homes. And so we're going to be having some house bills that's actually going to be at state code 24, which allows us to 3D print homes. But in order for me to get the 3D printer, it's going to take at least eight months for them to be able to build the printer. So, I mean, time's going to go past anyway, so I'm just going to sit there and wait and wait and wait. But I'm working in progress of getting a 3D printer. I also wanted to speak to you guys about an event that we're going to put. That is going to happen. I have a guy named Gordon Hinku who I've spoke to here at the Kent County Commission before about an esports competition. We are actually bringing in an esports collegiate competition, an international esports competition here. My friend Gordon Hinku, who does these international esports competitions, who has a partnership with Sacramento Kings, connected him with the West Michigan Sports Commission. He put together a presentation. I got it to ASMG Global, and I got it to the Sports Commission. Got it to them fast as I could because I like to do things fast and try to get the needle pushed fast. And so they got it both together, and ASMG Global is actually interested in bringing this esports competition that could be held at the Van Edel in the DeVos Place in the summer. I'm a July baby, so that's my time. It's my season. It's my year. And so I'm excited to bring that here because as we talk about technology, like, Division One colleges like Ohio State, Butler, like, these big universities are going to come here to our city because of me. And we're going to be able to bring those jobs and that talent, and we'll be able to bring those colleges here, and our students and people from around the country will be able to engage with those Division One colleges, those prestigious colleges, some of those colleges that you guys say. I'm from Chicago originally, so I don't get into the Ohio State, Michigan beef. But I, I'm, I'm just really excited to bring this here and like, just to see that presentation just inspires me. Like, I always talk about economic development. Like, I got a Forbes shirt under my hoodie right now. If I showed you guys right now, like, I'd probably take my jacket off so I can give a presentation for my next time when I speak for the next public comment. But I would really just like to say, like, I'm really excited to bring this esports event here. It's going to be cool. It's going to be innovative. We'll have some of the best prestigious colleges across the country here, and I'm really excited for it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name. You have three minutes, your address, and the agenda item that you're speaking to.
Greetings in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. My name is Daniel Scut. I'm resident of Kent County, of course. And again, my real identity is I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. You want my address?
Yes. What agenda item are you speaking to?
To the American Rescue Plan, where you are talking about allocating money for, quote, fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking, and human trafficking. Again, I've been ministering in the inner city here for 42 years, especially on South Division, the Hartside neighborhood, and we've seen a lot of human trafficking through the years. Praise the Lord that it's not so much on the streets anymore. Of course, a lot of it's online, but it's not on the streets like it used to be 42 years ago. But I want to appeal to you, I've mentioned to you Leslie King. Leslie King used to be a sex slave, as she calls it, forced into it by her own family for over 15 years. She just received a pardon from Governor Whitmer about all the other crimes that she was involved in. But she founded the ministry called Sacred Beginnings. And I don't know of anyone else more responsible for ministering to these women and children that are being sex trafficked in our own city. She now has homes that she takes in these women. She actually goes on the streets and rescues them personally. She has no fear for these sex slave owners, as she calls them, and these violent criminals. I don't know if you've considered giving her some of this money, but I would like to appeal to you to consider that. Again, Leslie King, Sacred Beginnings, Google both, and you can find her testimony. She loves the Lord Jesus Christ as well. And again, she's done so much to address this terrible issue in our own city. I could easily speak to the fact that, again, the murder of the innocents is aiding violence, as it says here on your handout, and domestic violence. It's a result, certainly, and a part of that. So again, all you can do to shut down 320 East Fulton, where the murders continue to happen every single month. Leslie King, Sacred Beginnings. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else for public comment related to the agenda? All right, seeing none, I'll call on Commissioner Coleman for our consent agenda.
Thank you, Chair. I move the consent agenda.
There's support. Commissioner Thiel. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
On the adoption of the consent agenda, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Sparks.
Thiel. Wooden.
Yes.
Steck. Madam Chair, you have 18 yeas, zero nays. The consent agenda is adopted.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to item eight, resolutions. And item 8A, I'll call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. Brevi. It is my pleasure to move adoption of resolution 30 of today's date to approve the Home Investment Partnership Program Allocation Plan from the American Res, or, sorry, we've got a lot of plans in this line. The resolution to approve the Home ARP Allocation Plan, which stands for Home Investment Partnership Program through the American Rescue Plan, and the 2021 Annual, amended annual action plan, comes to us from Kent County Community Action.
It's a mouthful. Is there support? Support by Commissioner McLeod. All right, questions or comments regarding this item? All right, seeing none. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
On the adoption of resolution 30, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy. Hildenbrand. Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod. Merchant. Oliver King. Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein. Sparks. Thiel. Wooden.
Yes.
Steck. Madam Chair, you have 18 yeas, zero nays. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. I'll call on Commissioner Antor for item B.
Chair, I'd like to move resolution 31, today's date, Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Submission for Canonsburg Recreation Area. Support?
All right, support by Commissioner Boujack. Questions or comments regarding this item? Yes, Commissioner DeBoer.
I am supportive of this, but I just wanted to share that I was a little bit torn. And I, I really appreciate preserving land. I, and I also appreciate the change of this resolution from last year. I do have a little bit of angst with purchasing such a large amount of land, as I very much believe that the private sector should have more of a ownership of some of the responsibility to preserve land. And I personally like to see the private sector inter, interact with that before the government. But I also realize the residents of Cannon Township, you know, they don't want another development. This is in my area. And so they also don't want it to be mined. So I am supportive of the grant application, and I really do appreciate the change of not owning the land of Canonsburg, but to preserve the land. So thank you for that. And, yeah, I just wanted to share a little bit of my concern, but I can support this.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
On the adoption of resolution 31, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Baker. Brevi.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
DeBoer. Diaz.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy. Hildenbrand. Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant.
Yes.
Oliver King. Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein. Sparks. Thiel. Wooden.
Yes.
Steck. Madam Chair, you have 18 yeas, zero nays. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Commissioner Burl for item 8C.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move resolution 32 of today's date, delinquent 2022 real property taxes, authorized issuance of general obligation limited tax note series 2023, coming to us from the Treasurer's Office.
All right, is there support? Support by Commissioner Thiel. Questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
On the passage of, or adoption of resolution 32, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
DeBoer. Diaz.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy. Hildenbrand. Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant. Oliver King. Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein. Sparks. Thiel. Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Steck. Madam Chair, you have 18 yeas, zero nays. The resolution is adopted.
All right, thank you. Next, I'll call on Commissioner Sparks for item 8D.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to move resolution 33 of today's date, additional 911 surcharge appropriation for fiscal services.
Support?
Support by Commissioner Coleman. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, we brought this up in finance, and it's kind of a perennial question about the surcharge. And the only thing, we had the one big provider that ended up writing us a big check after they were called out. And I just, again, I don't think that's a coincidence. I think, you know, they probably weren't doing the right thing. I mean, it's fairly simple for a big company like that to know how to process a check. They have all the information. They had to be called out before they'd write it. So it's just, again, I'm going to be beating a dead horse a little bit, but we got to stay vigilant. And I know we're doing that. And I know our corporate counsel's on top of this, and I know there's, there's only so much we can do. But they do have a history of not telling the truth or being honest with us. So that's my only comment. It's not a question.
I would just say, we have dug into this since the finance meeting, and definitely, it's an area we can make some process improvements, we think. It's unfortunate that the state law doesn't require companies to let us know how many phones they have or some of the numbers, but Lynda's also done some digging since finance as well.
One thing I'll, I'll tell you quickly, Commissioner, we're working up a memo for everybody so you can see the process. But in 2020, we collected about 8.65 million. In 2021, it was 8.95 million. So the amount we're collecting year over year is increasing, not decreasing.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Hennessy.
This is receipts that are exceeding the projected revenue and that we're going to, you know, put back into the central dispatch collection. But that also means that this is above and beyond what's in our budget. So how, you know, how do the funds get used, or what will be decided in this mid-year cycle?
By our nature, we estimate those conservatively. So this is not a rare occurrence for this to occur. So it goes back into the dispatch budget. I know there's a desire to pay off the debt faster, and so it very likely could be allocated for that or for capital needs. And Jeff, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but...
Good morning, Commissioners. Good question, yeah. So there's two PSAPS, primary PSAPS that get a portion of these revenues as well. So those will be split towards the formula. And then as Al indicated, there was thought that they pay off the bonds at the call date early, at least some of the series. So I know they have been building fund balance to potentially do that as well, so.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on this item? All right, seeing none. Will you please call the roll?
On the adoption of resolution 33, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
DeBoer. Diaz.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy. Hildenbrand. Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant. Oliver King. Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein. Sparks. Thiel. Wooden.
Yes.
Steck. Madam Chair, you have 18 yeas, zero nays. The resolution is adopted.
All right, thank you. For our final resolution, I'll call on Commissioner Coleman.
I move resolution 34, the 2022 Strategic Capital CIP Project Budget Amendment.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments on this item? All right, seeing none. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
On the adoption of resolution 34, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
DeBoer. Diaz.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy. Hildenbrand. Coleman.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant. Oliver King. Pakla. Pakla,
Yes.
Ponstein, Sparks. Teal. Teal. Wooden.
Yes.
Steck. All right, Madam Chair, you have eighteen yeas, zero nays. The motion is adopted.
Great, thank you. That brings us to our next item on the agenda. Item number nine, which is public comment related to general county matters. And again, you have three minutes. Please state your name and your address. And you can start by handing that out to the Clerk if you'd like.
I have copies for the Commissioners that aren't here. I'm gonna start my stopwatch here. What do I have, 45 minutes? Just kidding. Okay, first of all, I want to say, my name is Scott Atchison. And what do we all have in common here? From Caledonia to Rockford, Cedar Springs, Cascade to Wyoming, Kentwood, Wyoming, and everything in between, is downtown Grand Rapids. That's where we're meeting, the county seat, downtown Grand Rapids. And, but I could really use your help, and the help I'm looking for is to change the minds of the Convention and Visitors Bureau and Downtown Development Authority that downtown Grand Rapids needs an information system. Not really an information center, but an information system. You know, I'm looking for specific information of what is open daily, you know, from restaurants, bars, hotels, the movie theater, arts galleries, the museums. And every day, the information changes. That's very important. Every day, the information has to change. And I'm saying, from the downtown market to the south, Sixth Street Bridge to the north, Seward to the west, and Jefferson to the east, just that small geographic area. Every day, the information changes. I gotta ask you a question. What came first, the chicken or the egg? You know, but it's the same thing. What came first? Information, information system, or information center? You gotta collect the information before you can have an information system, and that's what nobody's doing. You know, and look, in the page two here, like this page, here's just like raw data information. So what I'm envisioning is the Convention and Visitors Bureau and the Downtown Development Authority should go knock on every door, put all the data into a database, and then link, hyperlink, the address, phone number, and websites. So when you have that, you can take a picture of a QR code to get it into your phone, or you can download it from a website. But once it's in your phone, you can click on the, on the address, up comes maps. You click on the phone number, you're making a phone call. You click on their website, then you got their website on here. But I'm saying, specific information. Why is the Convention and Visitors Bureau and Downtown Development Authority not doing this? I could talk five minutes on that, but that's not why I'm here today. But we need a good information center system. But I'm saying, when you have events at the Van Andel Arena in DeVos Place, you need to have a temporary information center kiosk with a human in there, something you set up in an hour and take down in a half hour to let everybody know they're welcome and show them how to use this QR code to show everybody what's open and daily, real-time information. Now, the hotel motel taxes should partially fund this. So should the Downtown Development Authority. I don't wanna go here and tell you how many people work at the Convention and Visitors Bureau or Downtown Development Authority. You probably know, it's close to 50 between the two. And I'm not saying really create another third-party entity to do this. We already have the infrastructure, but we don't have the will to do it. But basically, no time for questions. Questions aren't allowed. Get ahold of me if you need any more information. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your passion. Any other public comment? You have three minutes, and feel free to state your name and address.
I decided to keep my coat and hoodie on, but I really do got a Forbes shirt on. How you doing, everybody? My name is DeAndre Jones. I stay at 967 Temerack Avenue Northwest. I'm just really excited to bring this esports competition here, because last year I came here, and I'll be honest with you, Commission, I didn't even wanna put my own project, jump ahead, O3C, my community center idea. I didn't wanna submit that ARPA proposal. I just really wanted to just submit the esports proposal. That's the only thing I wanted to do. I was told that, for some reason, that my ARPA proposal for my community center would strengthen my idea, which it didn't. But I ended up getting compared to, and my idea was looked down on and all of that stuff. And I know my idea is feasible. I know that it's sustainable. I know how many times I went to the West Michigan Sustainable Business Forum and how many times I sat through events. I know how many times, I know how business savvy I am. I mean, I got accepted to it, Harvard for Entrepreneurship. I believe I'm pretty smart. It's on Facebook, you can really look it up. I'll send it to you if you wanna see it. But it's like, I know I'm a smart person. I know, like, I'm a genius. I know I'm a very smart, humble person, and like, I really can't really truly wait to bring economic development, true sustainable, equitable economic development for our community. Like, I really don't like that my community project was compared to people, that people feel like, you know, that all of this ARPA funding, that it should've just went to them and that. And I just feel like you guys did what you feel was best for the community and the projects there. And I just wanted to say that, because I never really spoke upon that process, and you guys have never heard me really speak about my project when I come here. It's always community-oriented and the things that I'm trying to do for the community. But I just want you guys to know just personally that I know my project is gonna be one of the best projects to ever, like, hit the face of the universe, to be honest. Like, I truly believe that wholeheartedly. I know what I've been. I know the work that I put in. I know the work that I'm willing to put in. I know the strength, the passion, the physical, the physicality, the strength that I have as a human being. I know what I'm capable of doing. I'm a state champion. I've accomplished a lot. I'm on Forbes. Like, you can look me up. How am I not one of the best? You feel me? How am I not one of the best? I'm on Forbes. You can look me up. But I'm just being humble, and I've achieved a lot of other things. I'm on USA Today. I'm on Ebony. I'm on a lot of fancy things. I'm a fancy guy. I come from poverty, but hey, the richness of the soul is only, the richness of the soul is not always physical. But I just really can't wait to bring 3D print some homes here, to attack the housing crisis, to bring esports here, to bring technology companies here, to groom our youth, our talent here, to really, truly do it in an equitable, fair, and just way. I know what I'm capable of. I know my project is feasible. I know it's sustainable. I know Guy House is really, was a great consulting firm, but they just really can't consult with the passion and drive in me being here consistently. I know what I'm capable of. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Again, Daniel Allen Scott. Holy scriptures again speak, "This act does the Lord hate; this act is an abomination unto him, hands that shed innocent blood." Just a couple statistics concerning Leslie King. She has helped reach more than 20,000 people with her weekly street outreach since 2005, and served more than 2,300 people in her transition homes. Last time I was here, Commissioner Diaz spoke about the fact that he took an oath, forget his exact words, to protect the residents of Kent County. I'm so grateful he brought that up. I want to remind all of you what oath you swore to, quoting from the State of Michigan and County of Kent. "I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of County Commission." This is how the opening statement of the state constitution reads. "We, the people of the State of Michigan, grateful to the Almighty God for the blessings of freedom and earnestly desiring to secure the blessings undiminished to ourselves and our posterity," which, by the way, Webster defines as descendants, "and succeeding generations, to ordain and establish this Constitution." The Constitution of the United States says that I swear to protect and ensure domestic tranquility and provide a common defense and promote the general welfare. Again, to secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. I think if you asked, could ask, any of these children being murdered at 320 East Fulton, whether they are ensuring or having domestic tranquility, I think everyone would have to say no. And even the parents are not enjoying domestic tranquility. And certainly, they're not getting defended. So you swore to this before God and whoever else heard your oath. I would encourage you to keep your promise and protect these beautiful unborn children. After all, it's National Women's Month. About half of those babies being murdered are little women. Please. The Lord will bless our city like no other if we shut that place down. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else from the public who'd like to comment? Thank you. Our next item is the Administrator's Report. What do you have for us today, Al?
Well, we're excited to start our Disney Way Kent Way customer service training this week. So we're out at the GRPS facility that's further north on Fuller. And we had 85 for the first half of the week, and we have another cohort of 80-some that started yesterday at noon. So I do one, I do an hour on Kent County history and morph that into the 60s Organizational Improvement Initiative. And we also have a hot seat exercise where some of us sit for an hour late in the day, and the employees can ask us any question they want, and they do. Also, just wanted to mention that Commissioner Hennessy was recognized by the Kent County Soil Conservation District for her years of membership and advocacy for their work. They are one of our partners. We do partner with them. You know, they're a group that was founded. There's 70-some, 74 of them around the state. They were founded in the post-Dust Bowl years in Michigan after a lot of the damage occurred during those years. And so it was good to see her recognized last week at the dinner. Also, we've completed our three sessions with Commissioners to kind of walk through the space needs analysis. So the next step will be to have a boardwork session with everyone together to consider a specific recommendation to move forward with that. And then, lastly, I just wanted to mention for our viewers at home that the item that the Board approved on the Home ARPA Investment Partnership, I just wanted to clarify that that wasn't part of the 127 million that the Board had to allocate, but it's actually a separate ARPA allocation that the Board did not have the discretion to allocate. So that's it for today.
All right, thank you. Our next item is reports. Are there any Commissioner reports? Commissioner Diaz?
Thank you, Chair. So last week, after, well, I guess I should jump back a little bit. After our Community Corrections Advisory Board meeting last month, I was invited to shadow a probation officer from the county, and I did so last week. We talked about a bunch of different topics, but one of the things that we kept coming back to is something that we've already spoken about today, the issue of housing, and also the need for health, for mental health services. It's something that is affecting everybody. That's already been made clear. But I think it's important to remind ourselves every month about the need that exists in our county for those services. I think it's important for us to do our part to address those needs. We already have begun to do so when it comes to housing, and I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do to either help our partners that we partner with when it comes to mental health services, or just seeing how we can address some of those gaps. We have our next CCAB meeting in a couple of months, I believe. And I'm looking forward to reporting back on that.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hildenbrand?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, Tuesday, Al and I attended the Experience Grand Rapids Board Meeting, where the county representatives on the Experience Grand Rapids Board. Just a couple highlights from their annual meeting on March 14th. Tourism is doing great. A couple numbers I think to note, we're way above 2019 numbers before the pandemic. So county rooms sold in 2019 were just a little over 2 million. And in 2022, it was 2.15 million. So significant increase in hotel room sales in the county. And then, room revenue in 2019 was 226 million, and in 2022 was 248 million. So it grew, hotel room revenue grew by over 20 million since the 2019. So we're clearly moving on past the pandemic, and things are going well. The books are balanced, and congratulations to Doug Small and his team for running a great organization and what they do to promote Grand Rapids and greater Kent County and bring people from all over the world here to our area, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner reports? Commissioner McLeod?
Yeah, so I just wanted to provide an update. The few of us that sit on the Kent County Senior Millage Review Committee met, I believe, on the 10th to review some letter of intents for agencies that provide services for the senior millages, senior millage. And we received, I believe, eight proposals, eight letter of intents, and will be, we approved for three of those to move forward in the fall, I believe, to come before the review committee and provide information on the services that they'd like to continue to provide for the millage. So we'll have more information later when we do receive those proposals and presentations from those organizations.
Thank you. Any other reports? I have one real quick from the Board of Public Works. You received an email earlier this week about some damage that occurred at the Recycling and Education Center. So I just wanted to let you know that things should be back up and running later today and tomorrow. They were, I had an email just from DAR this morning that they were getting things started. So they were able to secure the roof and the truss and the cement slab. And thank you too to the community partners that came together in a rush. You know, we had engineering, we had, you know, construction. We had a whole host of groups that came and were able to get that facility checked out and back up to speed as quick as they could. So that was great work. Any questions, feel free to let me know, or Al, and we can also work with DAR too on that, so. But everything should be up and running again for the recycling center. So any Commissioner reports? All right, we're good. Our next item on the agenda is Commissioner miscellaneous. Is there any Commissioner miscellaneous? Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. Just very briefly, I believe Commissioners Baker, Legrand, Hennessy, and myself, and I apologize if I'm missing anyone else, and Administrator Vanderberg, were all fortunate to attend State of the City earlier this week. And here, Grand Rapids Mayor Rosalynn Bliss provide her annual address. And one thing that I'm at least pleased to share was we were prominently featured. The theme of the address was collaboration and partnerships, and from efforts that the county is taking through Network 180 to provide mobile mental health services in tandem with law enforcement to our ongoing efforts together around housing and the multitude of ways that we interact with our partners throughout the county. But given this was State of the City of Grand Rapids, our partnerships with City Hall were prominently featured. Yeah, just wanted to report out that we were in high praise, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to publicly congratulate the ladies basketball team from Rockford for winning its Division One State Championship last weekend. I'm sure on behalf of Commissioners Teal and Commissioner DeBoer, and I think Commissioner Merchant as well, who represent Rockford, which I'm just realizing is huge. But great, great job by them and an awesome group of young women But great, great job by them and awesome group of young women and coaches and parents that helped make that happen. So congratulations.
All right, any other Commissioner miscellaneous? Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair. I did want to share some great news from District 21. Last week, Caledonian Township Board of Trustees met, and they approved the purchase of land at 10435 Whitneyville Avenue. This particular piece of property is at the confluences of the Thorn Apple and the Cold Water Rivers. This piece of property was the last piece of the puzzle for the completion of the land purchase in cooperation with Kent County Parks. So the township approved an expenditure of 431,000, which at some point, we as Commissioners will see come to this board for approval. And I'm advocating the acceptance of that expense, because this particular park and this particular piece of land is critical for the Kent County Parks Master Plan, and protects the land for the future. And it's just a beautiful piece of property. So good job by the Caledonian Township Board of Trustees in, you know, partnering with Kent County and seeing the value of, of investing in this land for future citizens of Caledonian Township and Kent County. Secondly, I also wanted to bring good news about Cascade Township, which last night met, and they met in closed session and approved a settlement of the PFAS litigation with the airport. So this is good news also because this allows the ARPA funding that we allocated, $3 million, that had stipulations for a no litigation, which was negotiated away last night. So Cascade Township will be allowed to get that $3 million, which the people of Precinct 8 in Caledonia, in Cascade Township desperately need due to the PFAS, you know, contamination to their wells. So great news from District 21, partnering with Kent County Parks, and then in Cascade Township, settlement of the lawsuit with the airport. So good news.
All right, any other Commissioner reports? Commissioner Coleman.
We're on miscellaneous, all right.
Yeah, I'm sorry, miscellaneous.
So I thankfully just, just remembered this. I'm, I have a duty today. Commissioner Ponstein sent me with a book for DeAndre, so glad you're here, DeAndre. So I'll pass this to, to him. It's called Not Impossible. And Commissioner Ponstein, I think, mentioned this a couple weeks ago. And I, I know with DeAndre's energy, you know, a lot of what he's doing, it's definitely not impossible. So Commissioner Ponstein sends this along. He is recovering from a knee surgery, so hopefully we'll see him again soon.
All right, any other Commissioner miscellaneous?
I have a quick one. My alma mater and high school in my district, South Christian, their boys' basketball team is headed to the state semifinals this weekend. So they've been quite the inspirational group, and we've loved watching them. So I wish them all the best, and hopefully they can bring home that Division Two trophy back to Gaines Township. Any other Commissioner miscellaneous? One last item, too, is following our meeting at 10:30. Is it gonna be starting at 10:30, our CIP work session?
I think we're following the meeting.
Just following the meeting?
Is that correct?
It's noticed at 10:30.
It's noticed at 10:30, that's what I think.
Right.
So we'll have a little bit of a break here. You can catch your breath. And at 10:30, we'll start back up with our, our work session right here in this room. So, all right. And next I'll call on Commissioner Coleman to move to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adjourn until the weather is warmer on April 20th at 8:30 a.m.